Now we'll turn to the Ball Construction. Oh, I'm sorry. While they're setting up, we do have a resolution, thank you, Madam Clerk, we do have a resolution moved by Council Durley that committed the whole recommend that council receive the financial overview relating to the Pelham Community Center as presented by staff for information. Questions or comments? All those in favor? Any opposed? That motion is carried. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much for having us here, Ball Construction. I'm Gary Houck. I'm Vice President, Partner in the Company, and Estimating Manager of Ball Construction. Tonight I have with me Kyle Valenta, Senior Estimator at Ball, and he was very involved doing a lot of what you're going to see on the screen here tonight. And Robert Nappel is our Project Manager and be involved in the project throughout the course. We're gonna try to, we're gonna start with showing you how we develop the scopes of work so you can understand the level of detail that we go through and you'll kind of get a better understanding of the accuracy of the budget that you're going to be seeing tonight. A construction manager, different than a cost consultant. A cost consultant will use a lot of historic data in developing their budgeting. As a contractor, we go out to the industry. So we go out to flooring contractors, drywall masons, window contractors, and we get accurate pricing, current pricing on the market and the local area. So, in a nutshell, that's really the biggest difference in how we're able to be a lot more accurate at the budgets. So you can see, this is a floor plan. The architectural drawings, you're going to get into a lot more detail in the next presentation from our architect. But the drawings at this stage are detailed schematic drawings. And they don't necessarily identify, you know, all the floor finishes, things like that. They'll show you the room layouts, where doors are, the building height, and all that kind of thing. So we have to go through, we went through the drawings and we color-coded them up. And this is a drawing that we color-coded up for flooring. So all the different colors represent different types of flooring. You know, where there's rubber skate flooring, where there's ceramic tile, where there's carpet tile, et cetera, wood flooring in the gym. So we identify all that. So we'll take this sketch and identify it as below. And we'll go out to the market. And we'll go out to a few flooring contractors. You have a summary of, we'll just pick up, show you a summary. And we're gonna just go, show you this detail on a few of them. We basically went through this level of detail on all the budgets you're gonna see in the summary. So this is, behind this is all of the quotes. So we got prices from Tosca Tile, Gemcon, and Clifford on the flooring. And we identified it as, you can see the skate flooring, the ceramic, the wood flooring, the running track. So if you look behind this, you'll see the actual quotes that came back from the industry. So we take, we'll take those three prices and we'll summarize them on the front. And then we'll kind of average the information we're getting back as opposed to just the lowest price. Because they're kind of based on, you know, at this preliminary stage, we're not, we're not just collecting the lowest prices. We're collecting what we feel is an accurate budget. And then we'll, we'll take these numbers and we'll carry them through to a summary sheet that you're gonna see in a minute. Maybe we'll just quickly show you one other type, maybe the wall types. You can see all the summaries we did here for gym equipment, roofing, et cetera. So here's, here's something similar we did for different types of wall types. Where there's masonry, where there's drywall, you know, the finishes in different areas. There, where the masonry is load-bearing, where it isn't. Some of the masonry has, it's a cavity wall with brick and insulation. We identify the heights of some of the walls, if they're not full height up to the underside of the structure. So that, that's basically the level of detail that we get for pricing.
Yeah, we'll go to the summary.
So all of the, each one of those line items that are on this summary sheet, on this Excel sheet, would be, we'd go through that same level of detail that we showed you for, you know, for the site work, structural steel, you know, roofing, all the way through. Each one of these line items will represent a tender package that a particular sub-trade will quote on. So we can track the budgets that we put in against the tender packages. And we'll, this project would be sequentially tendered, so we'll be tendering out packages in a priority basis. So we'll have an idea as we're going through the budgets, how close, what our overs and unders are, and how close we are to the actual budgets throughout here. So maybe we'll go to the simplified summary, it's just easier to go through. So this is Class C budget at this time. And basically, the different classes of budgets are categorized by the level of information we have at the time. So the level that the drawings and the designer at enable us to create budgets at different levels, Class D, Class C, Class B, Class A, and then final tender. So here we identify the total building cost. And this is, this is the building, the hard construction cost, we call it. Thirty-two million, four-hundred-and-ninety-five-thousand, one-hundred-and-eighty. And that is the cost excluding things like the design cost and other things that you're gonna see a little bit after, as we get further down. But it's made up of, these numbers are all sort of carried over from the more detailed summary sheet that you saw. So site work, for instance, two-million-and-seventeen-thousand, foundation, three-million. Building structure, which is made up of structural steel framing, steel deck, all the precast floor slabs and bleachers, and miscellaneous steel, five-million, four-hundred-and-seventy-six. The building envelope is identified as five-point-five-million, made up of the masonry, the metal siding, glazing, insulation, roofing and flashings, overhead doors, and caulking and fireproofing. Then we move on to interior finishes, the drywall, ceilings, partitions, interior glazing, flooring, painting, doors and frames and hardware, millwork, and change room finishes, four-million-and-ninety-five-thousand. Then we get into specialty items, things like lockers, moving partitions, washroom accessories, gym equipment, rink boards, seating, signage, score clocks. One-million-three-hundred-and-ninety-thousand. The elevators, there's two elevators, one-hundred-and-seventy-thousand. And then the mechanical is broken down to the plumbing and heating, ventilating, and air conditioning, the fire sprinkler system, the refrigeration and dehumidification, five-million, five-hundred-and-ninety. The electrical, electrical distribution and lighting, security systems, sound systems, bell and TV wiring, three-million-and-eighty-thousand. And then miscellaneous items, the general conditions, the site overhead costs, you know, temporary heat as you're building, temporary power, trailers on-site, supervision, all that kind of thing. Testing and inspection, insurances, and contingency. So in the contingency line item, we're carrying five-hundred-thousand, but we have another five-hundred-thousand that we built into some of the budget figures as we went along. So we have a million-dollar contingency. Some of the line items, when we go through it, they're hard to identify. Trades don't know exactly what to price at the time of looking at schematic drawings. So they, you know, they don't allow for enough ceiling bulkheads and things like that, like this level of detail that you see in a finished building when they're just looking at a floor plan. So we allow a little bit more. We, there's certain trades that we see that always go over what's anticipated. So there's half a million dollars that are in those trade packages that we've already identified. And then another five-hundred-thousand dollars, that's a contingency. We think that's a reasonable amount at this level of budgeting. Design costs, one-million-eight-hundred-and-seventy-two-thousand. And that's, that's architectural, structural design, specialty consultants like kitchen, possibly sound, different things that we'll need as we go through. Commissioning, and then the construction management fee that is in there. And then we have a few other items that we call FF and E, fixtures, fit-outs, and equipment. And that's things like tables and chairs that go into the building. And usually, they're things that are not built into the building. They're, you know, furniture, things that are loose. Building permit fee we carried, and HST for a total project budget of thirty-six-million, two-hundred-and-four-thousand, seven-hundred-and-seventy-seven. It's just, it's just kind of a overview and gives you a level of understanding of the detail that we go through to create the budget.
Thank you very much, Mr. Houck.
You're welcome.
For your presentation, there may be questions from, or is there anything further?
Well, we're gonna talk about the schedule as well, just a quick overview.
Sure, go ahead. And then that'll open it up to questions of council. Thank you very much. Bob, do you wanna? Thank you. I'd ask that you move in closer to the microphone so all can hear.
Sure.
Thank you.
Yes, as Gary mentioned, my name's Robert Nappel, and I'll be the Project Manager on this facility. And so what I'm trying to do here is create a roadmap as to how, basically, we can start construction as soon as possible. Maybe a little too anxious sometimes to get started, but that's my job. So what we did is we, we broke it down into a couple of main headings. You'll see the bold font. Oh, there we go. Yeah, so here we can see, we've got our M and E partner selection process. So we're going to engage design, build, mechanic, electrical companies to take advantage of their expertise and cost-effective design. So right now, we've started a process where we've, we've screened companies. We've asked for their information on their experience and their financial stability. And so we've gone through that process already. And we've narrowed it down to three teams of mechanical, three teams of electrical, two refrigeration. So we've got packages ready to go out for whenever the project is, we're given the go-ahead to do that. So that whole process is covered under this heading here. And we are interested to engage these people as soon as possible because they, they need to interact with the architectural team and finalize their room requirements and locations throughout the building. So that, that whole process, you can see it down through here. And I was maybe jumping the gun, hoping we could award tomorrow, but I understand there is a process. That's just my wishful thinking. But we recognize there is a public process that has to go ahead. But we're anxious to go and we're ready to go whenever we're given the word. The next, the next heading here, you'll see here is design and drawings. And this is where the team comes in, the architects. They'll be engaging a structural engineer. And then we'll bring on our mechanic, electrical people. And so they'll go a process through architectural design development in concert with the structural engineer. And the mechanic, electrical will come into play as well. So they're basically fine-tuning their design and confirming the last layouts. And then, at some point, we've got to start a site plan approval package. That's one of the, one of the things we'll need to do. So we'll be trying to assemble a site approval package early on in the game and get that in for approval. I think we've allowed six weeks for that package to be reviewed. And we're, we're trying to, we're trying to get, maybe I have to scroll a bit here. Yeah, just scroll to the, so we can see more of these bars. Yeah, so you can see here, so we're preparing the package. Let me see, where are we, our SPA, right here. And then we're trying to submit, say, in early June, late May. And we've got a six-week process, and we're showing, getting substantial, our site plan approval in, in, sort of, late August. Now, that's probably gonna be put off a few weeks through the, through the public process for approval here. But just to, so you understand the process. At the same time, we're, what we're trying to do is, is get the design to a level of detail that we can, that we can go to tender some of the critical injuries. And those are site work, the foundation package, which will include reinforcing steel, and structural steel. Those are, those are the first packages we need to get out on the street and get pricing on and awarded. There's a significant lead time for the structural steel. Probably two to three months for the drawings and design before they can start fabricating. So we want to get that out early. And obviously, the site work, we need to get going, get in the ground, get a shovel in the ground, and get our foundations in. In a perfect world, we'd like, we'd like to get on-site in August to start setting up fencing and do our locates, do our layout, and so we can actually start pouring concrete in September. The idea would be to try to get the foundations in certainly by Christmas, before the winter comes. I understand it doesn't get cold here, so maybe that's not a concern.
Any more?
But we try to get that weather-sensitive work in by Christmas. And then over the winter, we would erect the structural steel, which isn't so weather-sensitive. And by springtime comes around, we're ready to start rolling on and closing the building and doing some of the more weather-sensitive work. So that's, that's what all this business here was with the design and the drawings, is building up to site plan review. Here's our tendering and award here. So we've kind of broken up the tendering into three, three sequential tender packages. So first, we get out with the site work, the concrete, the structural steel, the rebar. The next package of trades to go out would basically have to do with the building enclosure. And the final packages would have to do with the finishing trades, the drywall, the painting, the flooring, and some of the interior elements. The other thing we have to take into consideration is timelines for preparation of manufactured items. So there's a process they have to go through where they have to do detailed shop drawings. They have to be reviewed and approved. And then the items have to be fabricated off-site. So those are all elements that you have to take into consideration well in advance to make sure when you start on-site, you're, you're rolling through in a logical manner and there's no hiccups and you're not waiting for something. It all comes when you need it. And basically, that's what I've tried to demonstrate is how we could, how we could get on-site in August and ultimately start pouring in September to get a jump on things. And that's about it.
Thank you very much for your presentations.
Okay.
Any questions from members of council? Council, Ribby.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you for your presentation. Very, very complete. But I have a couple of questions and just to test, I think, the estimate. I'm sure it's right, and I'm sure you have satisfactory answers, so I'm looking forward to those. I'm concerned about the contingencies. You provided contingencies of a million dollars. That's approximately two-and-a-half percent of the project.
Is that enough? Three percent.
I mean, let me, let me, let me explain my concern. Let me explain my, my concern. Clearly, we're doing some fast-tracking, that is, we're tendering for design and build once you've already begun building. So the opportunity for change orders and that sort of thing kind of increases with that. Have you built all of that consideration into, into the plan?
Yes, yes, we have. We, we are a design-build contractor as well as, we're an ICI contractor, so institutional, commercial, industrial-type work. This particular building type, we've, we've probably built actually more ice pads than any other contractor in the province. And a lot of community centers, we've probably done, oh, I don't know, we are four in the KW area. We just finished one in Milton not too long ago. We did one in Whitby. You know, we've probably done thirty similar facilities like this over the last twenty years. But a lot of them are design-build. And when we do a design-build project, we have usually about six to eight weeks to put together a thirty, forty, fifty-million-dollar project and work with a design team. In this particular case, we, we spent a lot of time back and forth, a lot of meetings, and defining the scope, trying to understand it the best we could. When we put together a design-build after that six weeks, we have to live by that number. You know, that's, that's the, that's the thinking. That's the process we go through when we, when we prepare these budgets. So that, you know, we identified some of the contingencies right in those packages. We know the type of hardware that's required on these types of buildings. We know that it's, it's a full piano hinge. They take a lot of wear and tear. We've been through it all. We've, we've developed a lot of details that, that are tried and true, that we, that we know work for sure, you know, that stand the test of time. Otherwise, we're called back to, you know, to do repairs. So it's a, it's a little more than, you know, if you went out to a cost consultant, you'd probably have more like a five or ten percent contingency. That's what an arco, that's what the architectural community with a cost consultant would normally tell you. That's why I started off by trying to explain the difference between a construction manager doing a budget versus a cost consultant. So, you know, I think, I think a lot of people are used to hearing those larger contingencies. I don't think it's warranted in this particular case. The thing that we're gonna have to watch in as a team to make sure that, you know, the, the budget is, is held, is we have to keep going back, defining the scope, looking at our choice of materials, looking at, you know, we might not be able to choose the ten-dollar tile. We might have to choose the eight-dollar tile. But all of these budgets are very workable. We believe in them. We wouldn't put them out. We like to be actually on the conservative side of budgeting. We, you know, we, we don't want to, we have to do that when we're doing a design build because we have to live and die by that number. So I hope that helps with the contingency understanding.
Counselor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and through you. So you're confident of the, the cost envelopes that you've got there for the design-build elements? You've indicated that that's the kind of contracting you do. For clarity, you won't be doing that on this? You'll be managing others doing this?
Well, no, we don't do, we don't do the flooring. We don't do all that. I just meant, we do design-build projects. We do similar projects.
Right. But again, for clarity, you're our, our manager as opposed to someone with a contract to actually produce any of this?
That's right.
Okay.
But we, at the same time, we do offer advice on, on different ways of doing things and work with the architects. You know, I think they have a vision of how they want the building to look, but I, they're, I think they're quite willing to, to listen to our critique on some elements. And they're quite flexible in achieving the thing that they want. And, and, you know, we, because we've been through the mill many times on this kind of project.
Counselor, I'm not sure that you're getting the answer.
I'm not.
I'm gonna ask the CEO. I think he understands what your question is, in the way it's phrased.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ball Construction is not the general contractor. They're the construction manager. And hence, the requirement of all the tenders that would go out in order to hire the people that would actually build the building.
Great. Well, that's what I wanted to hear. I wanted to remove any, any ambiguity that might have occurred as a result of the answer. I mean, when you indicate that this is the kind of work that your company does, it, of course, raises the question. And it was really important to us, I think, when we made the decision to bring you on, that you would be kind of a third party to ensure the accountability of all of the contractors involved in this project.
Well, even when we do a design build, we, we sub out all of the work. We, we, we have the ability to, to do concrete work and rough carpentry and install doors, but that's it. We don't, we don't do the flooring. We don't do...
But in any case, you won't be doing it.
Oh, we won't.
Yep. Good. No, that, I appreciate that comfort. And, and the fact that this is work that you are well familiar with does give me some confidence with regard to, to the contingencies that you've indicated. That small number did surprise me. I just wanted to test it. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Thank you. Other questions from councilors? Counselor Kersey.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you, one of the things that often impact projects like this are change orders. Maybe you could touch, and some of what you've said already gives me some comfort, but maybe you could expand on some of the ways that you would look after the town and our constituents in preventing extensive change orders that would have a significant impact on, on the bottom line.
I think, I think the biggest thing is the coordination time upfront. One of the things that we did, probably forty percent of the cost of the project, is the, is the mechanical and the electrical. That's where you normally see a lot of change orders in coordinating that package. When we go the design-build route and select these, these teams, they coordinate. They have to have a complete package. So for, you know, missing information in the drawings that could cause change orders from that angle, unless there's a design scope, you know, you have a big part of the project covered. And that's, that's why we suggested that, that way to go is really to, to control costs, the final costs. And we did that through, through the biggest part and the biggest trades involved in the project. I think, Bob, from, you can maybe comment on how we critique and how we look at change orders when they do come in from trades. Yeah, I mean...
You can just move a little closer to the microphone. Thank you.
As Gary mentioned, a big part of it is, is doing the upfront coordination and making sure you've got as complete a package as possible before you go out to the street. And if there are gray areas, you identify that. Like, you know that before you go out. You don't, you don't go out with not understanding what the total package is. And you can make allowances. And at the same time, I think we'd want to put pressure on the team to make a decision in a timely manner. If it's not possible, we'll just have to work around it. But the biggest thing is being aware of, of what those unknowns are and identify them. And of course, as far as the change order go, with design-build on that side, they would only be entitled to a change if, if, if the town was to come forward and change their mind through the project and want to add something or change something. And that's the kind of thing we've got to keep control on and keep it to a minimum. I understand there may be some things that you just don't have an answer on, but we would, we would, I guess, give you notice as to if there was something that, a decision that would need to be made before we went out onto the street, that if, if we could get that answer and build into the tender package ahead of time. That, that's a, actually, that's a really key component in construction is to, is to make timely decisions. And that's, that's probably your biggest asset, is having a tight team together that can make those decisions quickly and in a, in a manner that doesn't delay construction.
If I can just add something to that, too. At the start, Gary showed you the scope-of-work drawing that we did up for the flooring. So that gives you an idea of the extent that we go to for just doing a budget. When we're doing the, the final tendering, we do a much more detailed scope-of-work checklist. We do a thorough review of the drawings, make sure that we, we try to, we overlap everything so that there's a seamless flow of, of work for all the sub-trades. Everything overlaps, but there's no double-ups. And then we, we put that into checklist. We make that part of the sub-trades tender form. And we use that to make sure that, that everything is covered off. So we find that that really helps eliminate some of the confusion and cause for potential changes as well.
Thank you for the very complete answer. Counselor Kersey?
No, that's fine, Ms. Mayor. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Others? Counselor Junkin, and then Counselor Powell. Counselor Junkin.
You, Mr. Mayor. Sir, every project has a wow factor. So what would you consider to be the wow factor on this project?
I think, I think the...
Yeah, go ahead.
I mean, they picked some fantastic materials. I think the design is, in my opinion, is very elegant. It does not look like arena. We were told, do not want a building that looks like an arena. And I think it's, it's quite upscale in appearance. Like, it's excellent quality of materials. Basically, simplicity of design, don't mean to take your thunder away.
We may get into some of that with our architect.
I think it's very well thought out and very efficient, very efficient in space, in circulation space. And yet, there's, I'll leave it up to the architects. But I have to say, it's one of the nicest projects that I've seen for a community center.
It's great to hear. Thank you. Counselor, anything further? Counselor, anything further?
Yes, I guess I'm going to ask a question that, that I'm going to get asked by my constituents. So I'm going to, I'm going to put it out there. So it's because of this design, and as you call it, an elegant design, is that why, quite frankly, the 36.2 is substantially higher than what has been done in other arenas, other neighborhoods? So is that, so is that where the 36.2 is coming from, is in the more elegant design and the materials?
Who wants to answer that?
Do you want to answer that, Gary?
Well, I think there, I think, you know, these days, there's a lot of energy efficiency-type mechanical systems and things like that and, and dehumidifications and not necessarily every community center takes all of, all of the, all of the items. You just have to kind of, you know, pick and choose and see what's important to you. And, you know, when you say there's other projects that are less, we always struggle with, you know, people looking at the square foot cost of this type of building or whatever. We kind of, we break it down a lot more, sometimes can be misleading. And, you know, what's out there maybe was finished three or four years ago, which means it was designed and tendered two or three years before that. So, you know, we really have like six or seven years of, you know, inflationary, and we're not talking, you know, big amounts, but we, we sort of averaged between 1% and 3% increase in construction, sort of averaged at 2% a year. So every year, things do cost a little bit more. One of the things that has driven costs a little bit on some of the specialty items are, you know, the US dollar right now. It's a bit of a factor. So, you know, I don't think that it's, when, when you, when you compare all of the things that are in, sometimes people's budgets that they kind of throw out to the public could be the construction budget versus the total project budget or, you never really, when we drill down, we get, we get, you know, a real understanding of what the actual costs are. When we look at this as a construction cost, we did, we finished building the Wayne Gretzky Center in Branford about two years ago. And it was, you know, a little bit larger project, four pads, gymnasium, community, some community space, but it had a pool. But in comparison, it was 100, it was $265 a square foot and your construction cost here is around 240. You know, we built some that are, you know, also less, you know, the 2, the 220, the 215 a square foot. But it's, you know, you can work, you can really work to any budget, it's a matter of what you're going to get. I think the biggest thing you want to make sure is you're getting great value and, you know, a building that's going to take the, the wear and tear, with the right materials used in the right, in the right areas, you know, and the right energy costs, too. LED lighting is a little bit more, but it's the way to go right now, you know, in some of these projects that might have been done, you know, five years ago and people talk about the costs, maybe don't have LED lighting and don't have some of these things that are more the norm right now. So I think just looking at just quick budget prices without doing a real detailed analysis can sometimes give you a bit of a, a feeling that you're really building the Cadillac. And I mean, this isn't, this isn't over the top, but it's on the nicer end of, of recreation buildings that are, that are put out there in community centers right now.
Thank you. Counselor Papp.
Well, thank you. I'll take sort of the opposite side with, I know Counselor Junkin what he's going at. I am extremely pleased to hear the answer to the contingency and many other factors. I have been involved in building healthcare facilities, other facilities, people know that, of this nature. And what I'm going to say to you and also ask is that when you go out to price this, it's not about elegance, it's about relevance, it's about resiliency, because this building is going to be there for decades. It's not going to be, you know, and I, I've seen things that have been built for the sake and I understand the costing of it, and they didn't make it, they didn't last. So from one respect, I think the design reflects what our community really wants and is willing to invest the time and effort, because that's what is key. So on that note, I presume that when you were putting these packages together, that the materials that you're going to look for, and don't let me, you're looking for the best quality that's going to last periods of time, because I've seen, I hate to say it, mistakes made that we ended up paying in another area where change orders were coming in faster than we could put the building up. Because the idea was, well, we want to cut it, but the bottom line was, so I presume you're looking for the best and highest quality of material? Is that a fair statement?
Who wants to answer that?
I think as a, as a, as a group, we, we, we had meetings and we talked about, you know, the choice of the cladding materials on the, on the building, the windows, you know, we went through that flooring products, you know, where we had durable products, where they were going to take the wear and tear. We went through that process together. We actually started a little higher than where we are at right now, you know, with, with choices, but we, we knew where we had to be and we, we, as a, as a team, we made, we made choices.
I'm happy to hear that, because in the end, design-wise, I'm one of the ones you'll hear that I don't want it to look like nothing, I know it's going to have arenas, I don't want it to look like that. I want it to look something that fits in with the character of our community. But also, you need to put, and the mayor knows this because I'm sort of overwhelmed with, particularly that you want to make sure that the quality of the, of the, of the materials and how it's going to function is going to last a long time, that we're not looking at down the road doing major repairs and that. So I'm pretty confident that, and I'm very happy to hear about the, can, I've been caught in the cost consultant side as well. Where that can, it can be misleading. This way here, you're saying to us you're confident.
Well, the question, the question is the confidence level of the quality materials?
The materials have.
Just trying to draw it.
Well, that's what I, because you know I'm getting at, the buildings can be, if you don't invest the, the, the right amount of money or, I mean, the right types of materials, it pays. You, you end up paying for it in the long run.
Oh, for sure.
And we've seen it. Our building, as much as we say, our arena right now that we have is what, over 40 years old? It's got to be that.
Forty this year.
Yep, so we want it to last, we want people to drive by and say, you really spent a lot of good time and made sure that it was proper. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Durley.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you, the, we have built in some architectural design guidelines for the whole East Vinhale. And that, everything there is, is a standard, which is something that's going to be pleasing to the eye as well as lasting. So I just really like the idea of this complex fitting in with all of that, because if we built something that was, that was subpar, then we're shooting ourselves in the foot because we're asking other peoples to do it. So I, I think the rationale for just the way you guys are going about it is excellent and, and pleasing to the eye and it's going to fit in with the, with the total East Vinhale. And that's, it's a great, great thing to hear. Thank you.
Thank you. This is time for questions, and I think later on, we'll, we'll open it up to comments at the end of the evening from counselors.
I wanted to, when you put out these packages and from your experience, have you encountered where sometimes the budget amounts that you put in sometimes come in lower?
Oh, yes. Yeah. Yeah, actually, the, the whole, you'll see that whole column will have a, sort of a gainers and loser kind of column. And the, the goal is to have them balance out at the end, you know? But typically, yeah, some things are going to be under, some things are going to be slightly over. And a lot of it's going to be because of decisions and choices that we make as we go through in defining the scope and the level of detail.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other, any other questions? I know Counselor Ribiac has a, another question. Make it real.
It's real short. It's actually picking up, Mr. Mayor, on Counselor Papp's questions. Let me ask it as bluntly as I can. How much are we trading capital cost for operating cost?
We don't know now, right yet, because we have to go through and, and do a detailed mechanical design and then go through that, that process, you know, to, to really sort out what the operating costs are going to be. We're not at that level to do that analysis, I wouldn't say, Bob.
No, but I, but I think we've anticipated some energy-saving.
Oh, for sure.
Energy-saving elements to the mechanical systems. And we'll go through that process and, and I imagine we'll be doing those calculations.
Right, I, I say that, though, because we've also made a decision with regard to an, an operating cost threshold that we're aiming at as well. And, you know, materials and design, that sort of thing can contribute to great operating cost if it's not.
Yeah.
For the sake of saving some capital. So we, we want to be real careful about, about that part of it, because both of the, both sides of that, that equation need to be met.
One of the things we have allowed for in, in the, in the overall pricing is, the refrigeration is obviously a huge energy consumer. We've, we've allowed for the Eco Chill system that, it's sort of Simcoe's, you know, name brand for it, but basically, it's a heat exchanger that allows you to capture the heat that's given off when you're making the ice and then use it to heat the water and, and things like that. So obviously, all those, that's almost standard now, but some rinks, some, some municipalities can't afford that even. And it's about a $300,000 upcharge, you know, to go through that. But we have allowed for that type of a system in our budgets, so we go through that level of detail. I just meant when I, we couldn't really get into the details, we, we don't have any calculations of the trade-offs, but we do have, we've allowed for things like that.
Sounds like something that you continue to work on, right, as well? You talked about the.
Yeah, that's the next, the next stage.
Thank you. Thank you very much for your presentation, gentlemen. I had your names here again, where are they? Here we are. So Mr. Nappel, Mr. Valenta, and Mr. Hope. So thank you very much for your presentation. I do have a motion, it's been moved by Counselor King, that Committee of the Hall recommend that council receive the presentation materials by Ball Construction regarding the Pelham Community Center project managers outlining the cost analysis for information. I trust, gentlemen, that, that you'll provide us with maybe a summary of some of those documents. You got into some big detail there, so I'd ask you to work together with the clerk on materials that then we can make available publicly, some sort of overarching numbers as opposed to some of the fine detail numbers. So thank you very much for that, and I would, any other questions or comments? I'm going to call the question, all those in favor, any opposed, that motion is carried. Thank you. And I would ask our next presenters to start. Christophe Gauthier, thank you. And Michaela Weiner is here and Gila Salon. So thank you very much for joining us. And you're having trouble.
Yeah.
Somebody can assist?
He's got his, he's got his USB.
Ben Chos.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yes. Sorry. That's the, that's the.